We have a letter in front of you dated December 12th which summarizes the questions that you posed last week at this time and then also, I've had a chance to talk with many of you during the week, I think most of you, all of you, and during those conversations you've occasionally asked additional questions and I've tried to respond to those as well. I'm going to do my best to summarize these responses, there's quite a bit of information here as I go along, Scott and Alan and Dan and others may have additional information, I just encourage you to stop me as I go along if you've got additional questions or want more detail about particular issues. Question number one, how would a tax increase be shared between commercial and residential classes of property? Essentially, the answer is that it's a function of the amount of taxable property in each of those categories. In the city of Des Moines, about 51 percent of our taxable value is residential, 42 percent is commercial, so if you look at the tax increase that's been recommended at $2.9 million, assuming that number about 1.5 million would be for residential taxpayers and 1.5 million for commercial taxpayers, that's simply taking the suggested rate increase and applying it to those values. The remaining $200,000 would come from other classes of property like industrial property, utilities and railroads. Question two, has reduction in commercial valuations downtown been uniformly applied? For the most part, that's the case when you look at the numbers, but I would draw your attention to one of the attachments. It's a spreadsheet up at the top, it says valuation changes for highest valued properties downtown. It is actually quite revealing and I will say quite dramatic information. It lists, I don't know how many properties here, 25 or 30 of the larger properties downtown, and it shows you the 2007 valuation of that property, the 2009 and the 2011, and then it computes the difference in valuations for each one of those properties over that period of time, then it shows you the percent change. Now, even though there's four years there from 2007 to 2011, that's essentially two valuation periods. Valuations occur, reassessments occur every two years, so you've essentially got two assessment periods that are being reported here. So, for example, the very first property on the list, 801 Grand Avenue, had a 2007 value of 70,863,000. By 2011, that value was 53,570,000, so a drop of over $17 million of values, that's a 24.4 percent reduction. And as you look on down the list, you'll see the numbers vary a little bit, 28 percent is the number we've been talking about for the most part, 28 percent's a pretty good peg in terms of how these valuations have changed over that period of time, but as you'll see, some of the numbers are quite dramatic. There's one property in here about halfway down the list with a 44 percent reduction, another one 40 percent reduction, those are really big numbers. Now, these are selected properties downtown, these rates of decrease do not apply across the city to all properties, but the numbers are, I think, quite dramatic and the information is very good. This data comes from the city assessor's office, Jim Maloney's office, so we simply try to do our best to report it. But one last thing about it, you'll notice on the far right, the little symbols that are shown there, those symbols indicate three different factors. One is those properties that have a minimum assessment agreement. When there's a minimum assessment agreement, of course, the value doesn't go down, it stays at that minimum number, that's a good thing. The reason that exists is because in those cases, we have properties that have had some sort of economic development agreement with the council, and as part of that economic development agreement, they are obligated to enter into a minimum assessment value because we're essentially providing benefits to them, so in return for the benefits, they have to make sure they maintain their taxable values. There's also properties indicated where there's been a major renovation and then also properties where the property in question is a parking garage, those values, parking garages haven't been reduced as much. Okay. Question number three, how many properties are disputing their valuations? Well, for as of January, for the valuation date, January 1, 2011, about 1,914 residential properties were disputed. Of that number, only 668, about a third of them, it looks like to me, were denied, thus receiving no change. The others, about 1,246 were approved, resulting in an additional $33 million of reduced values. On the commercial side, 678 commercial properties were disputed, 205 were allowed, 473 were denied. The allowed disputes resulted in $33 million of reduced values. At present, there are about 76 commercial properties and 60 residential properties that are currently on appeal before the state property assessment appeal board. Those appeals are for properties that have valuations in the range of 231 million dollars. We've also attached a list of those properties that are currently under appeal. It looks like this, it says highest valued properties under dispute at PAAB state appeal, and you'll see those properties listed as well. Question number four, how was the camera enforcement revenue calculated? This has been an item of some discussion, many people have looked at the, our estimate of revenue for the coming year at 200,000 and said that seems low based on the news reports that have been out. Here's the analysis, and I attribute it all to Scott Sanders and his staff and working with police, I think it's a good number what they've come up with, here's how it was calculated. The average collections have been about $34,000 a month, so if you multiply that times 12, it's roughly $400,000 in annual revenue. There are about $200,000 of expenses related to that, which leaves a net revenue of 200,000, which is what we have been projecting. If additional revenue is experienced in the first year, and it's possible that will be the case, the funds over and above the 200,000 would be treated as a one-time revenue until a plateau, in other words, until there's a history established that legitimizes a certain number, we would just use those additional revenues as one-time funds, and of course, those would be reported back to this council. And by the way, the 200,000 dollars in revenue for red light camera that we're projecting, my recommendation to you is you use that to reduce the tax rate increase that is really in there primarily to protect police and fire services. Question number five, how was the 68,000 in revenue calculated for the special event allowance charge? What are some examples? Just so you remember, we had shown in our additional revenues, non-tax enhanced revenues, a line item indicating 68,000 of revenue. You asked us to go back and reevaluate that and look at it and figure out exactly what it all meant. Well, right now, at present, your procedures, your ordinance requires a 1,000 hour, in effect, free service essentially from police department for special events, there are a little over 100 events in the city, and then over 1,000 hours, then the event sponsor pays that cost. The recommendation from the police chief is to reduce that from 1,000 to 250 so that each of those events would pay more than they're paying now, and then that generates the additional revenue. We have some additional information here in the response, but as we've looked at this, we have reduced our estimate from 68,000 to 50,000 based on the questions that were asked, we think that's a more reliable number. I was asked to give you a list of the different events that have received the benefit from this program, and you'll find attached a spreadsheet, actually two pages that list all of the events that, for which we received revenue from this particular source or paid the benefit in the city of Des Moines last year, so there's a comprehensive list there of information. Question number six, what is the 10-year history of the major portions of the consolidated tax rate in Des Moines? I think the question arose, I think it was Mr. Moore's question actually, what, how does the rate of increase for the city of Des Moines, just on looking at the tax rate, compared to Des Moines Public Schools and Polk County, you'll see the response here over about a 10-year period since 2002. It shows the city, if you look at the very bottom of the table, the percent change since 2002 shows Des Moines with a 2.8 percent reduction, just in the rate now, Des Moines Public Schools with a 7.3 percent increase and Polk County with a 7.2 percent increase in the rate. So, that data would indicate that Des Moines, city of Des Moines has reduced their tax rate somewhat over that period of time, well as the school and the county have increased it slightly during that period. Question number seven, how have the cuts impacted management versus non-management? Essentially, what we did was go back and look at it a number of different ways, you can look at this data different ways, but we looked at it based on collective bargaining group. Essentially, what we found is the cuts have been proportionate to the size within the organization, so if you look on page three, you'll see each of the bargaining units listed. We went back as far as 2010 and compared it to the number that would be in place with the recommendation that's before you, and essentially what you see is that the percentage of total employees within the organization represented by each group is roughly the same, and I would draw your attention particularly to police, the PBU Police Bargaining Unit, their numbers essentially stayed the same from FY10 to what's in the proposed FY13-14 budget. Now, that number is just the police bargaining unit, there are other individuals within the police department, the chief has reduced over time, that's not reflected here, would show up in the SPM numbers or MEA. Question number eight, how will the proposed changes at the libraries affect low and moderate income residents? Greg Hyde provided the response here, essentially he's indicating that one of the cuts had to do with assistance that we provide to individuals that come into the library wanting to use the computers to help look for a job, so that assistance wouldn't be there, that would have a direct impact on that particular group. I would suggest that one of the things that I'd encourage Greg and his staff to look at would be the use of volunteers. It seems like an ideal thing that you could use volunteers to help people navigate through the internet or whatever might be necessary to use the computers in that situation, so that might be an ideal application. Seems to me there's a lot of folks out there that might be willing to do that kind of work on a volunteer basis. Question number nine, can the school district share in the cost of libraries? The short answer is, we don't think that's a realistic option, and particularly given the constraints that Des Moines Public Schools have, nothing wrong with asking the question, but our estimate is, our judgment is, not likely given the somewhat different missions that we each have and the constraints that Des Moines Public Schools have. Question number 10, are there other fees that should be increased? This is a question that comes up fairly frequently, we have, as a city, been committed to using fees as a revenue source. Basically, law tells us that we can't charge more in fees than it costs us to provide that service, so it's really not a profit center, but we certainly can charge the cost that we incur in providing that particular service where there's a fee. In our judgment, we have done that systematically and we've utilized those fee increases where they seem appropriate. I will tell you that in some areas, and I would think particularly in the area of building permit fees, we've tried to be a little bit conservative on that front, just given the state of the economy and the slow rate of building right now, it hasn't seemed like a very good time for us to go out and try to increase those fees when that particular sector is struggling a little bit with their own economies, so. But, long story short, we do think we, philosophically, we'd like to use fees as much as we can, we think we've done that, and where we've seen opportunities, we've brought those to you and recommended them in the proposed budget. Question 11, will the city continue to support DART with park and ride funds? Yes, you did this last year and the year before, the number was 680,000 dollars. Just a little bit of background, the park and ride facility is a parking garage that the city owns, it was funded, I think, 70 percent or so with federal dollars, and with those federal dollars came a requirement that those funds be used for some sort of mass transit purpose, so they're very restricted in what we can do with those revenues. What the council has decided in the past with, I think, a lot of wisdom, is to use some of those revenues directly as a payment to DART, and they use those dollars, in this case, 608,000 dollars, to reduce the DART tax rate within the city of Des Moines. It's a very effective strategy, it's a good use of those dollars, and we would recommend continuing to do that because it holds the tax rate down that our citizens pay for the DART levy. It doesn't, it's not a benefit that accrues outside the city, it's just for city taxpayers. Okay. Question number 10, will the proposal to remove trash barrels in the parks lead to more litter? This was an issue that many of you raised with me, expressing concern, I've gone back and talked to Don Tripp, and I'm sure Don and his staff would be more than happy to address it more, but I'll attempt to give sort of a short answer here. I think the proposal is to go from about 400 trash receptibles to 100, so we don't eliminate them all. There were continued to be, as I think Don told me, receptibles in every park. We did look, I had one suggestion, I think it was Mr. Mahaffey, that perhaps we ought to look at some more of a mechanized approach. We don't think that'll work too well because the barrels are actually out in the park and it doesn't really lend themselves to a mechanized approach. The park, the park department, and I think, Don, you indicated your board and the foundation has also been supportive of this, they feel strongly that they can get the job done here by using a volunteer approach. Obviously, there's no guarantee on this sort of thing, nobody wants to have parks that are full of litter, so I think the objective here is not to, not for that to happen, but to find a cheaper way to do it. As part of this discussion, it is, it does bring to light the whole matter of using volunteers within the city, I already mentioned a little bit in terms of libraries, possible use there. The park department seems committed to giving it a real try here with the litter pickup in parks. I think it's a good strategy, and frankly, the use of volunteers may be something as a city that we want to approach more systematically in the future as a way to soften the impact of budget reductions. Of course, there's no guarantees, it's, there is, I think, a fairly robust volunteer approach that parks has used in the past, other departments have used volunteers as well, and I think what we're saying here is maybe, maybe that's an avenue we ought to pursue with a little more vigor and a little more organization as we go into the future.
Can I just add to that? I think the whole volunteer concept is really significant, and you and I talked lately, last week, and I talked with Don Tripp as well, there's a city, Virginia Beach, Virginia, that's actually utilized a volunteer program for the last 30 years. They can actually demonstrate, because they do tracking, they've got 20,000-plus volunteers, they can demonstrate how it's reduced the tax rate and what the savings have been, and I think that we really need to focus on that in a big way because it's an opportunity, if you look at the demographics of our city, you've got lots of different groups of individuals that'd be their way to be able to participate and be a part of the solution for budget issues.
Well, I agree, and I think that's, I think with council's approval, of course, we'd like to, we'd like to put a little more emphasis on that going into the future, and I think there are a number of city operations, we're talking about parks here, but I think, I think police might be able to use it, Public Works did some volunteer work with pickup in the rivers not too long ago. Libraries, I think there's some, probably other applications across the board that could perhaps benefit from that.
Rick, I'd think that in some cases, the location, the trash barrels could be located so you could use mechanization, make them close to the road or something that, that I don't, you know, I'd have to see what the parks say about that.
Sure. Well, Mr. Mahaffey, we will look at it, I think that, I think the commitment here is that we're going to pick up the litter one way or the other, we're going to get the job done, we're going to try the volunteers if you're willing to give that a try, but I don't want it, I don't want to leave the impression that we're willing to accept a bunch of littered parks, we don't want that, and I suspect the council and the public doesn't either. Okay. Can additional cuts be made in the council mayor's budget, was a question I had. The budget proposal we gave you last week, last Monday, was 2,000 hours to be reduced, which was a reduction from, I think, a little bit of travel and salary savings courtesy of the mayor's reduction. You asked us to see if we could increase that. What we found, and I know Alan did the research on this, what we found was that your, your travel expenses for the last year were slightly, well, not slightly, about 4,000 or 5,000 hours less than budgeted. An awful lot of the travel that's done by council is reimbursed by somebody else, so there is an opportunity there to save, save a little bit of money, and our thought was if, if you want to increase the savings or the, reduce the budget in that particular sector, you can, so we've, we would suggest increasing that reduction within the mayor council budget by 5,000 dollars. Again, that's not really intended to reduce your travel, it's simply taking advantage of the fact that much of the traveling that's done, much of it by the mayor, others as well, is reimbursed by some other entity. Question number 14, does the budget proposal include a match for rapid transit project being proposed by DART? Many of you may know, DART is looking at a bus rapid transit route that would run on Ingersoll and University. It's a wonderful idea, very creative, cutting-edge kind of thing that our city could do. Personally, I'm supportive of it, unfortunately, the match, I think, is in the multimillion-dollar range, and we simply don't have enough information or frankly, the capacity right now to put it into our GO-funded capital improvement program, but at the same time, it is a very attractive concept, and my suggestion to you is that we continue to work with DART over the next 12 months and see if we can identify some other funding source that could perhaps be used for that purpose. If it's the council's will that we insert that into the capital budget right now, I'd be happy to go back and take a look at that, but because we're in such a period here where we've frankly, got to be looking at reductions and holding the line, it's really difficult to insert that amount of funding into the GO-funded, there is not another way to do it other than a GO-supported.
So, are we saying that other projects that we currently have in the CIP, will they qualify as the match?
Well, we're going to look at that, that's what I mean by working with DART. We'll look to see if there's other things that we're already doing that could count as the match, that would be great, but if that doesn't work, we'll see if there's other revenue sources.
Okay.
I just, I'm sort of giving you a mixed answer here, on the one hand, I don't think we, my recommendation is, I just don't think we've got the, I think it's 4 million dollars is the match request, and I just don't think that's there right now to include in the program, given our budget constraints, but we want to keep the door open and work with them and see if there's a way that, another revenue source that might be made available for it. How are the additional ADA costs being handled? I had mentioned this briefly last week, I think, that last year, we had to increase our capital budget by about $8 million, I think there had been 2 million in it, we had to put in additional 8. So, as it sits today, the adopted CIP has about $10 million in the program to pay for handicap accessible improvements in all of our facilities and curb cuts and so on, and there is a consent decree that has been negotiated with Department of Justice that mandates those things and requires the council to complete those improvements through FY18 for sidewalk improvements and then over the next three years for other improvements. So, it is, it is a very rigorous requirement, and the council certainly stepped up last year with your willingness to allocate about 10 million dollars to do that, to do that work, that was a huge cost. What we've learned since then is that there is another 6 million dollars, and I think that's really on the conservative side, I think the number's likely to be bigger, significantly bigger than 6 million, but apparently, when you do an asphalt overlay, as Public Works does with, well, using gaming dollars, they do a lot of asphalt overlay work in this town, very popular program, good program, when that happens, apparently the determination is that the sidewalk approaches on all of those areas need to be ramped, and that then costs this additional, at least 6 million dollars into the program, that would have to be built into that and accomplished within the same timeframe of our agreement, that is through FY18, so that's over seven years. It is, it is a huge cost to simply insert into the program, yet at the same time, in talking to the city attorney, I understand that is, that is the obligation we have right now to make those improvements, there's not a question about that based on the current agreement. So, my suggestion to the, to all of you is that you consider asking the city attorney to go back to Department of Justice and ask for an amendment that would, it would not be to say you're not going to do these improvements, but rather to see if you can extend the time period on the agreement to give us additional time to make those improvements, so the burden of that 6 million or whatever the cost is, is not felt in the, in the near future that we have just a bit more time to do it. And Jeff, I'd be happy for any additional perspective you have on that point, I sort of feel strongly about this one, not because I don't think we ought to be a city that's ADA accessible, I think we should be, but with all of the challenges we have budgetarily and with the fact that we've already stepped up with a 10 million hour commitment, it seems like the additional commitment is really, really difficult for us to consume right now budgetarily, and so I do think it's something we at least ought to pursue in a proper sort of way by asking for an amendment, so perhaps Jeff, you'd like to augment some of that.
Sure, thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mayor and Council. Rick and I have had quite a bit of discussion on this, I don't disagree with the underlying contention or analysis that he has, I think the difficult part of this, excuse me, difficult part of this equation is that on most of the consent decrees, and there's nearly 200, 200 of them across the country currently, on most of the consent decrees, the amount of time that they give cities to remedy past problems is three years. We already asked for an extension to seven years, and after quite a bit of negotiations and talking with my staff, there was quite a bit of back and forth, eventually the Department of Justice granted us an extension to seven years. If we're able to, and we will go back certainly and make the request and explain that the cost is greater than we anticipated and certainly than the Department of Justice anticipated, but if we're able to get this done, it would be the first one in the entire country where they've been allowed to go beyond seven years, but we'll, we'll make that effort if council directs us.
But the significant issue here is the fact that there's an additional cost that was not known at the time the agreement was signed, is that correct?
That, that part of it is true. What the Department of Justice is going to say is that this has been a federal law via court interpretation since at least 1994, and so they're going to say, well, you know, you have additional costs, but those are costs you should have been spending all along, and that's the pushback that we've always gotten from the Department of Justice, and so our response back will be, this is, you know, in fact, an even greater cost than anybody anticipated, and therefore for us to do this without bankrupting the CIP, we'll need additional time, and hopefully they'll be receptive to that, especially given the state of the economy. Rick and I have had that conversation as well, that when this all started with Department of Justice, the economy was expected to turn around much more quickly than it has.
Okay.
Is there any, you know, evidently, we've got ramps currently scheduled into the future, is there any reason why we can't reassign those schedules to make the overlays and resurfacing priority and then backfill into these others we've currently got scheduled?
The, well, again, federal law as it currently states, and the city's filed comments recently from the engineer's office, for example, to, to explain and encourage that the federal government changes rules such that asphalt overlays are considered to be maintenance, that's certainly been our position. That's not federal law currently, so that would require a change in, in rulemaking authority. The, the problem is, and what they're, what the Department of Justice is going to say is, this is something that's been required all along for at least the last 17, almost 18 years now, so their expectation is, this is what you should have already done, we've given you three years, we normally give three years to do it, now we've given you seven years to do it, so I think that's kind of what we're talking about, is going ahead with the projects and doing those correctly from here forward, but the projects that were potentially not done with curb cuts or appropriate ramping with previous asphalt overlays, that we would extend out that period.
Mr. Manager, the one thing that I would like to add to this, while I understand the, the problems as stated by yourself and by the city attorney about consent decrees and certainly the Department of Justice, we've got another one that's going on with the CSO consent decree. There've been a number of cities that amended that CSO through green infrastructure resources and solutions and, and made significant reductions in those CSO agreements, and I'm hoping that we're continuing to have our engineering department and your department, maybe the city attorney, need to look at those kinds of options, especially ones that have been successful in other cities. have been successful in other cities. And I would suggest maybe you go to Indianapolis and also go to Philadelphia and look at the solutions that they have come up with in terms of green infrastructure that has changed their, their CSO consent decrees significantly. I think that it might benefit us and, and help us in addition to that. And we've talked about it a little bit in the past, but I, while it's not a question, I would ask that maybe we continue to do that.
Mr. Mayor, we can, we can pursue those two cities. I think, I think our staff has done some research there, but we can look into that a little bit further and report back what, at least what we discover on that, and have further discussion about it. Any, any thoughts for the thoughts on the ADA business? At present, the way the capital budget will come to you, the additional six million or whatever it might be, isn't, isn't, there's not a specific line item for it. It would simply be, if, if it's asphalt overlay related, it would come out of the, the asphalt overlay budget. So in effect, what happens is you do less overlay work in terms of the street, because you have to spend additional portions of that budget to do sidewalk curbs. So if you have thoughts about how to approach it, or if you even want to pursue it with DOJ, and the attorney makes some great points, it's clearly an uphill battle to make a change in it. I think that's what Jeff is telling us. So it's kind of up to you as to whether or not you want to go that way.
Well, I, I guess I would be supportive of pursuing it. The question I would have is timeline. So I'm guessing that we're not going to get an answer back in time for the approval of this budget. So we would have to assume that we're not going to be successful or have an answer back, and it would move forward accordingly. But I would still think that we should explore the opt, I mean, the worst they're going to tell you is no.
Right.
It's not going to cost money, other than staff time, to work through the process with the Department of Justice.
That's, that's basically true. The, the one caveat that I would add to that is that we've had two complaints filed with the Iowa Civil Rights Commission that have been dismissed relying on the consent decree in the current timeline. Can't say that the Iowa Department of Human Rights would have a different take on those. I just want council to be aware of that as well.
And so the complaints that were filed were dismissed?
They were dismissed, which dismissed for, no further investigation by the Department of Human Rights doesn't mean that the individual couldn't bring their own private cause of action. But, but the, the basis for the, the state in dismissing those was that we already had this consent decree in place and we're moving forward.
Okay.
So it, that's one of the things that, that we're, we will keep an eye, keep an eye on as well.
Okay.
But you, council member, you are correct that it would be extremely difficult for us to get an answer back. In fact, if we get an answer back before the budget, that would probably be a quick and loud resounding no, would be my guess.
So I'd rather you take a little more time.
Is that, is that? Okay. Question number sixteen, what is the best use of additional revenues generated by the new increased fees? Again, we had projected just under seven hundred thousand of, of additional revenues. My recommendation for you is that you use that to reduce the tax rate increase from forty-six cents to thirty-four cents. That's kind of how the math works out. There are clearly options, though. I mean, you could do different things with those dollars if you choose to do it, and my recommendation is to use it to reduce the, the tax rate increase a little bit. There is, we had some great discussion during this past week about other thoughts about that. One of them was that perhaps we ought to keep those dollars sort of in a, some sort of a contingency to protect against legislative action that, that may or may not occur in the next session. I talked it over with Alan and Scott, and I think our, our considered judgment is that, that the most likely thing for the legislature and the governor to do is to fool around with the commercial rollback. If, if that happens, it's likely that the impact would be in FY-14 and beyond, not, not in FY-13. So there would be another year for us to figure out how to deal with that particular change if, if that happens. So I, I think probably, there's not, there's not a compelling reason to keep it in a separate reserve account for that purpose right now. I'd also remind you that we do have, as we did last year and years prior, a half million hour operating contingency that's in the recommended budget that can help address issues that arise during the year that are not, are not projected.
Rick, could you go back, could we have for future information, the contingency? How much has actually been spent? What, what would be the types of projects that was, or the funds that was used for?
We, we have, we have not used it very often this past year. I'm going to look at Scott or Dan or Alan and see if any of them can augment what I'm going to say here. I think we used a portion of it this past year for the current year, but why don't you just get up and explain it?
Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager, Mayor and Council. There's a current allocation for this year and for next year related to a legal settlement that will utilize about half each year of our five hundred thousand dollar contingency allocation. So we already know of about, of two fifty that's scheduled for this year and first thing in July next year.
Another example, maybe stay there, Alan, and you can help me with this. Another example of this, you might recall in the budget last year, or two years ago, that we had made cuts in the mosquito spraying business that we have. And there was quite a reaction as we got into the season. I think many of you thought that, that cut was too deep. We reinstated the program, but it's a good example of how that contingency can really help you. It wasn't, it wasn't terribly expensive in the scope of things. We were able to cover that expense with a contingency, and in my mind, that was a good use of the funds and legitimizes a reason to have that kind of a thing. If we miss a target, when you're doing these kinds of massive changes in your budget, it's nice to have a little bit of a safety valve if we miss something. So there, there, the application worked rather well. But fundamentally, on number sixteen, our suggestion is to use those revenues to reduce the tax rate increase. That would make the tax rate increase, if you were to do that, sixteen ninety-two instead of slightly over seventeen. Question number seventeen, why not use reserves or other revenue streams to resolve the budget gap? That's always an attractive idea. One of our guiding principles in budgeting for the city is not to use one-time revenues to balance the budget. The council is stuck with that philosophy for as long as I've been city manager, and I think even before then. Some other things to keep in mind, the Moody's, Moody's, which is one of the rating agencies that rates our bonds, has said, and we've quoted their, their statement here, "The city's general fund reserves have historically been relatively narrow compared to the median fund balance for AA1 rated cities." And they've also indicated that any decline in the reserve fund balance would work against us in terms of our bond rating. You might recall, I think a couple of weeks ago, Scott Sanders advised us that the, our ability, because our, our FY-11 performance on budget was a little better than we had projected, there was a little bit of cash at the end of the year that we'll be able to put into the fund balance, which gets us up to about ten percent. So right now, as we set, our general fund reserve is about ten percent. And I'll tell you, that's, that's very, very minimal for an organization of our nature. That's not high. Another, another way to think about using other revenue streams, the gaming funds, is something the council could if they decided to use gaming funds to offset budget impacts. We've, we've used those gaming dollars to do street and bridge improvements. It's been a very successful program, very popular with our citizens, and I think with council as well. I wouldn't recommend that you use gaming funds for an operating budget purpose. I think it's, it's used appropriately for streets and bridges, and I think we ought to continue to do that. And frankly, that's the sense I've had in talking to all of you, that you like to continue that allocation of those dollars for that purpose. There was also the UPS payment that we got, another sort of a chunk of change of five million dollars. However, our intention on that is to use that in sort of a operating endowment in conjunction with parking system, that, that would generate us about four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twelve years. That four hundred thousand offsets the loss that we have incurred when the UPS deal was terminated, and we lost the pilot payment that was coming from UPS, which was slightly less than four hundred thousand. So that's a long way of saying that the UPS dollars that we received would not be a good choice for balancing the budget. The rest of the questions that you asked had to do with revenues and expenditures on the proposed budget, some enterprise questions, debt service levy. And I'm going to turn it over now to Scott, who's going to walk through some slides on that particular subject. But before you start, Scott, if there are, are there any other questions on what's outlined here, these responses?
Scott, it's yours.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Okay. The first question I'm going to address is the total revenues and total expenditures, question number eighteen. We put this together slightly different to hopefully illustrate how the projections have changed over time. We came to you in, in September, in early October, talking about a seven point seven million dollar budget gap for operations. And to get to those figures, we had about a hundred and sixty-five million in revenue for fiscal year fourteen, the top right corner you'll see there, since this is a two-year budget plan, with the expenditures being estimated a hundred and seventy-two million seven hundred thousand. So that was how we were calculating the seven point seven million dollar challenger budget gap back in September. Clearly, we had variables that, that changed on us between that time and December, with the rollback coming out, solidifying what our TIF needs were, and the pension funds, and a lot of other variables that got a little better estimates on. And so in December, just a couple of weeks ago, we, we talked about a better gap estimate at seven point two million. The changes you'll see there is that the revenue actually dropped on us due to the property tax changes. Part of that, in fact, the largest part of that, is the disputes that Rick just mentioned earlier. So we anticipate a half million less in property tax revenue for those December numbers. With the expenditure, it actually got better. With the pension funds, the rates came in lower with some accounting changes that, that occurred in the 411 system and how those rates are calculated. So you'll see the expected expenditures drop from a hundred and seventy-two point seven million down to a hundred and seventy-one point seven million, so that we ended up with a new projection of seven point two million. So now, in the most recent discussions, we've talked about how do we resolve the seven point two million challenge for fiscal year fourteen. And what's in front of you now with the city manager's proposal is four point three million, roughly, in cuts to the expenditure side and two point nine million in revenue. One of the decisions that still needs to be made then is, of the two point nine million in revenue, how much of that is property tax and how much of that is additional fee revenues? But what we have is a balanced budget with those two actions that puts us at about a hundred and sixty-seven point four million of both revenues and expenditures, thus a balanced budget. So hopefully, that addressed the question. I think maybe it was Councilman Coleman that, that had that question, so we'll be sure to, to see if this hit the target or not. But I, I might pause just now before I move on to enterprise fees, if there's any questions about the general operating budget in this, this chart here.
Scott, a question on the expense side. January thirteen, we will have to comply with the new healthcare, is that correct?
There's phasing, there's, there's pieces of it.
Has that been incorporated into the budget?
As best we can into the health costs. Those are, those are being included. Clearly, that's a difficult one, to have a clear vision of what those expenses are going to be. So if, if you like, we can try and itemize that for you and try and get you.
I'd just be curious as to what the assumptions were.
I, I let HR, so I would, we can look into that further for you if you'd like.
Any other questions on?
So I'll move on to enterprise funds. The question was asked, I think, a couple of weeks ago, I apologize if you had a few of these presentations, about what the impacts might be on debt service level, or debt service rate and the enterprise funds. So for, this morning, this is meant to be a, a high-level overview of those areas. We'll have an opportunity later to give you the exact details of what the annual debt service is looking like after we solidify the CIP. So this is just meant to be high-level for you to understand where we are trending, where the pressure is for, for potential rate or fee changes. When it comes to the debt service levy, this is geo-debt that is supported by tax rates. You'll see that the state has a constitutional limit on us that is the green line. That is essentially five percent of our assessed valuation for the city. And what is customary is that the cities will often then kind of self-regulate themselves and put a limit that's less than that, so that you don't run into any constitutional issues. And so what we have here in Des Moines is, is a self-regulated level, I believe, four percent, about eighty percent of the, the state's requirement. And the red line shows that, and it changed over time, where if you go back to ninety-six through two thousand and four, you'll see it's actually a dash line. I believe that was eighty-five percent at that point in time, and the solid red line indicates a policy change by the council and elected body to show eighty percent of the constitutional limit. The blue bars show where the actuality is and the projections as we move forward, and where we think the, the total outstanding debt will go. So we have a cushion there, you'll see. And the reason for that, the two, two main reasons for that, both refinancings, where we've been able to save on the debt service and refinance old debt, as well as some significant cuts to the CIP plan. So there were, you'll see here, if you, if you go back to what the plan was back in two thousand and five, that first row there, the intent was to issue quite a bit more debt, and because of that, then have a higher tax rate that was projected moving forward to actually eclipse five dollars per thousand for just the debt service levy alone. With the changes that were made then since two thousand and five, with, with less projects being funded and refinancings occurring, you'll see the actual tax rate was able to come in quite a bit lower than that. And so now, what we have is the final line there with the new projections, where we have a anticipated tax rate for next year of four twenty-four, and then the following year, an improvement to four fourteen. There's a couple of things going on there. Without the, the valuation loss, which was unexpected, the, the rate was anticipated to go to four oh four. So it would have moved from three ninety-four in the current year to four oh four. But because of the loss of valuation, essentially, we're looking at a four twenty-four tax rate for the debt service piece. And so that will utilize thirty cents of the increase from this year to next that we're talking about. So only four or five cents of the tax rate increase will benefit the operations next year. And what happens then in two thousand and fourteen is the valuations improve slightly due mostly to the rollback, but we also have some abatement valuation that'll be coming back online. And so there's an ability then to go to four fourteen with the debt service. And that's a good thing, because our pension funds are going to need every bit of that ten cents for operations in two thousand and fourteen. And so the, the way I look at this from the high level is, the pressure for two thousand and thirteen fiscal year is really debt-related due to the valuation drop, and then in two thousand and fourteen, it shifts more to an equal debt service pressure and operating pressure. And so the total tax rate obviously would not be anticipated to change from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen.
Does that anticipate any changes by the Iowa Legislature or the governor's office to somehow affect the commercial rollback?
No. No, it does not.
Does the increase in the debt levy? Does the increase in the debt levy reflect some increase in debt?
There is a small increase in debt that was anticipated. Even if, I didn't do this analysis, but even if we issued no new debt and shut off the CIP, we'd still have an increase in the debt service rate. I can get that calculation to show you that.
Scott, that's because of the way the debt service payments were, they were back-end-loaded and we're getting to the back end.
Right. So a lot of those decisions, quite frankly, were made in the late '90s and early 2000s of how the debt was scheduled for 20 years, increasing over time with the anticipation. And that's standard, because the anticipation is that your valuations will also increase so that the rate can remain somewhat stable. Again, we're in a different paradigm right now with valuations actually dropping. And so it's somewhat of a double whammy. We're anticipating an increase, but instead, it not only doesn't stay flat, it actually decreases. Does that help?
Well, I'm not sure it helps, but it's an explanation.
And I've done my job, right? Okay, so I'm going to move on to, again, a high-level discussion on our enterprise funds, starting with the sanitary sewer. And the mayor brought this up. We have requirements on us to do some separating of the sanitary and stormwater. That's the second bullet point there, and third, that really looks at the sewer enterprise and puts on almost 60, over $60 million of additional capital needs. In reviewing the cash flow per forma, if you will, for the sanitary sewer, the operations is fine in that its normal increases 2%, 3% on the expenditures for operation. Again, in this situation, the real pressure is coming from the capital needs, again, most of which is now required of us to get the separations done. And what that is leading to then is we are looking at the need for another rate increase on the sanitary sewer. We're looking at probably is in the next budget cycle in the July timeframe. And so what we need to do for you is bring back all the details on that, working with engineering on not only how much in capital outlays we're looking at, but when those should be occurring, so we can structure the debt and show you exactly what we're thinking. For now, we're looking at an estimate that would be between 6% and 8% annual increases to the sanitary sewer. So we'll come back to you here in a couple of weeks, probably three weeks, to fill in those blanks, if you will.
It would be effective July?
It would most likely need to be effective July.
This reflects the CSO consent decree?
Yes, part of the $60 million. I'm pretty sure it does.
Okay, so does it anticipate a potential SSO litigation?
Mayor, County Members of the Council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Mayor, if I understood your question, do these numbers, that is, the budget projections, indicate the costs associated with our consent decree, which has been entered into by the city and by the WRI? The answer is yes. You've, on a couple of occasions, raised both the city of Indianapolis and the city of Philadelphia as alternatives that may lead us to have further discussions concerning the consent decrees. We'll continue to look at those. As to the issue that I think you just raised, if I heard it correctly, does this also anticipate sanitary sewer overflow litigation? We believe that our omnibus consent decree that we've already entered into touches on those elements also, so it does not. We believe that the consent decree touches on our requirements under the Clean Water Act that deal with both combined sewer overflow issues as well as sanitary sewer overflow issues. Hope that's responsive to your question.
It is responsive.
Again, this morning's conversation was just to alert you, if you will, that there is pressures on the sanitary sewer system due to the capital expenditures. This, I wanted to just quickly throw a slide that shows you, part of the reason for the pressure on the fees is the consumable gallons or the billable gallons within the sanitary sewer, which is obviously reliant upon the water usage in people's monthly utility bills. And that's actually gone down. Another element of this is that the more recent fee increases were scheduled at 6% a year, and that's the yellow line that you see there that goes back to 2008. So we had anticipated raising the revenues by 6%. That's what we changed the fees by. But however, because the consumption was going down at that point, or went down after that point, we did not actually collect 6% more. And so that's somewhat of a warning sign to be careful that when we say we're going to raise fees by 6%, the revenue may not actually follow. And so we've got to be careful with how the consumption may be changing over time as well. That's all obviously weather-related, as well as larger industrial users, maybe using conservation techniques, using gray water and things of that nature. So there are a lot of factors that move on that as well. As far as the other enterprise funds, I've already mentioned the debt service levy and the sanitary. The stormwater has two scheduled rate changes for this coming January and the following January 13. Those have already been approved by the council and mayor. So we are not anticipating a need to change that schedule. And so we think pretty confidently that we can hold off until 2014 to change those schedules. But you need to be aware that prior actions, we already have two rate increases for the stormwater scheduled. That will have to include $20 million of additional levy work and bridge work due to flood controls. So depending on how those cash flows look, we'll have to structure those debt to try and fit into as low, essentially as low as fee as we can get it into. And so we'll come back to you again with a lot more detail that will show you the cash flow for stormwater that will include the $20 million of additional cost on the capital side.
On the $20 million, just to connect the dots for everybody, this is in reference to the need that we have as a city to make improvements to our flood protection system out here that relates back to the flood flow frequency study released by the Corps a little less than a year ago. It is, in my view, a very important, very high priority undertaking for us, and it's been referenced here. And Scott's making the point that although we're going to have to add that, in my view, to the program, we've got scheduled increases in stormwater utility, and we think with those increases that you won't really need to look at stormwater fees until 2014, hopefully. But with the imposition of $20 million in there, it certainly hastens a day when those rate increases are going to have to occur. But fortunately, it doesn't look like that would be in the short term.
And so the last two enterprise funds, the solid waste is very fiscally sound, not looking at any changes there. And the parking, we're going to have to have another discussion about the parking fees. We're not looking at any changes to rates. Obviously, there's excess capacity with the parking system today. Rick mentioned earlier, the funds from the UPS payment, we're looking at going towards refinancing some taxable parking debt that's at like 6% annual cost. And so we can save the parking system an incredible amount of money by loaning that UPS money to the parking system and then get back from the parking system that $400,000 a year, which is what UPS was paying us all along. So the general fund will not see an impact as the $400,000 will continue to come in. And so, again, we will come back with details on the parking and solid waste as well. But we needed to give you the opportunity to hear where the trends were headed and where the pressures are for additional fees, which hopefully gives you enough context for when we go out to the public on Thursday to discuss the budget.
Scott, can you go back to the 2.9 million for the proposed new revenues? What would the actual tax rate be then in that 2.9 million?
Well, that's still to be determined. If it was all tax rate, 46 cents, it would be the 2.9. Otherwise, if it's dropped to like 34 cent tax rate increase, we'd have to make up 600 or about $700,000 in revenues from fees, which we think we can do with the new fees. Does that make sense?
Just to be clear, that's my recommendation to you, based on all the discussions that I've had, is that it not be the 46 cent, which is what that is, but rather be the 34 cent increase, which is utilizing those $700,000 or so of other revenues in addition to the property tax.
I believe the 34 cent tax rate increase would be about 2.1 million, almost 2.2.
All right.
Comment, though, I think that's a good use of that, really, that sort of UPS lending back to parking. Say on that.
Thanks, Mr. Haffey. It is Scott's idea, and it's a really, it's a brilliant idea that really saves the parking system and is a solid way to provide an ongoing infusion into the operating budget, which is what we need to have. So it really kills two birds with one stone. It's a good use of those dollars.
All right. Any more questions? Ms. Hensley? Skip? Bob? All right. Let's go ahead and if there's nothing else on the agenda this morning, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, there's not. Just before you open it up for public comment, just to remind you for everybody, our town hall meeting, two of them, this coming Thursday, I think that's the 15th of December, both of them at the Central Library downtown, not the Botanical Center, Central Library downtown. The first one's at 11:30, which will go where the lunch hour, and the second one begins at 6:00 PM. Both of them this Thursday. We will, the intention is to provide an overview of the proposed budget, much as we've talked about it here with the changes that have been brought to me by the council, and then allow for public comment, the more of an open-mic kind of approach. Be a little different approach than what we did a month ago or so, but hopefully a good way to get public comment in, so.
All right. Anyone in the audience have any comments in general? Now open for public comment. Anyone else going to be stepping up?
Good morning.
Your name and address, sir?
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. I do want to commend the city manager and staff on excellent presentation and on the plans they put forth. I do have some specific issues that I'll bring to the town hall meeting, so I won't do that today. But I do have one response that I'd like to have you look at. As I sat back and listened to the last two meetings, I'm noticing that there's been virtually nothing talked about in regard to how we can increase revenue. And the fear that I have as a citizen is that in two years, we'll be back to the same spot, looking at the same questions and finding what else we're going to be cutting. Because what we know is that we have not actually increased revenue by any stretch of imagination through this process. We are simply covering our bases for what we need right now. And what I would like to see from the manager and from the staff are some very unique ways of how, in the future, we can increase the revenue source so that we don't have to come back to this very sobering thought of continuing to cut and continuing to lose people and that we actually have ways that we can say, you know what, we have enough money to put a little bit more fat. You know, it is the fat that gives flavor to the meat when you're doing these kind of things. So you don't want to trim so much fat that we lose flavor as a city, in other words, that we lose our appeal to citizens wanting to move here, because we've trimmed ourselves to the bone so much that now it's kind of this gaunt look that we have as a city trying to simply pay our bills. And I know that you're limited by legislative action and what you can do with revenue, but what I've not seen here is any kind of future-looking act that we can do as citizens and as a city to go to those legislature, both state and federal, and say, folks, we need a relief here. We are a capital city that has vast majority of, a large amount of our property non-taxable. And we're unique in that situation. And so I would like to encourage the manager to look at ways in which we as citizens and we as a city can begin the process of finding out, how can we actually get revenue that's not based upon property tax? And if we've got to do work together towards getting changes in laws to allow us that ability, let's do it. But so far, I've seen no plan for us to do that. And I'm fearful that in two years, we're going to simply be back here seeing who we're going to have to lay off or what kind of projects we're going to have to close off. Thank you.
Mr. Mock, just a quick comment for those that may be concerned as Mr. Mock is that maybe we're not finding as many revenue opportunities as there may be out there. We spend, this council, a lot of time up at the Iowa Legislature with lots of, we think, great ideas, none of which have been taken up by this legislature to help our revenue streams. So we are sometimes left only with cuts. And I know that there are those that are out there in the state that feel like cities across this state, all 947 of them, have a lot of fat still left to trim out. And I, for one, and I think maybe I'm hearing from you, that I think we've pretty much cut all the fat away and gone through the muscle, and now we're about to hit the bone, if not already there. And we will continue to not only listen to any ideas that our constituents and residents and any others have regarding revenue ideas or coverage, backfilling of expenses, some of which was promised years ago by the legislature, that is not taking place at this moment, to try to work out ways to positively affect the lives of the places where people actually live, and that's the cities and the towns and rural areas across the state. So I appreciate your comment, and I want you to know that we are, every day that the legislature's in session, trying to create interesting, innovative ways to finance local government. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, could I just add?
Please.
Everything that you said, I think, was right on target. And Marty, I appreciate you bringing that point forward. And it's the first time I can remember when a citizen came before this council and brought that issue up in exactly that way. And I think one of the things that we find challenging, as the mayor said, is asking the legislature every year to consider different kinds of revenue enhancements that could be put in place. There are a number of ideas out there, all of them would work, frankly, in terms of looking at it. But what we haven't had as a city is, in my view, is really strong support from our citizenry that would join us as we make those appeals. And Marty, if you or others have that kind of an interest in, that inclination, I think it would augment what we do as a city to try to get the legislature to step up. So it's really an appeal to you and the various organizations that you work with and other citizens to help us there. Because obviously, the legislature's not terribly motivated by our arguments from an official standpoint, so maybe it does take more of a grassroots approach. And I think we would welcome anything like that, that would be pointed at the legislature in terms of things they could do to help us. Because I think you're right, in two years, we're going to be back at this. And in my view, we can't take another, we can't take more reductions without really, really hurting the ability of the city to perform services, and I think therefore hurting the community. So, good points.
I have been receiving texts from Helly Greece, who's been watching us online this morning. He was unable to attend, but I want everybody to know that he is diligently watching the proceeds of this meeting this morning. So are there any other questions anybody might have? Seeing none, thank you all for attending, and hope as many of you as possible can attend our town hall meetings this week. Thank you.